Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City Hall's legislative session. I'd like to start by reading our land acknowledgment. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restored justice for all. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Bingle is absent.
Thank you. We are so honored to have so many of our community partners here to help us celebrate Earth Day, the Environmental Workday Earth Event. And I'd just like to acknowledge some of the participants who are out there in the lobby: the Lands Council, the Native Project, the NAACP Environmental Justice Group, the Climate Institute at Gonzaga University, SNAP, Weatherization Program, SCC's Environmental Science Program, the City of Spokane, Spokane Escape Program through the Water Department, 350 Spokane, Soil Smart, and maybe some others I did miss, so forgive me on that. So again, thank you all for coming down and being part of your city council tonight. We are going on, in honor of Earth Day, we are going to have a water and tobacco blessing. So Shane Garcia and Tony Lodge would please come down to the front, please. Welcome, both of you.
Good evening. My name is Shane Garcia. I'm from the Hopi Tribe and Kiwa Pueblo down in Mexico and Arizona. And I'm just gonna offer a blessing. I know it's on the schedule to do a water ceremony, but I just wanna offer a blessing. But before I say a blessing, I just want to acknowledge all the tribes in the local area. I have a lot of friends and family that are from the local tribes, and I respect their ways, and sometimes speaking before them is, you know, something that I, you know, I'm honored to do, and I want to respect their lands. And, you know, my lands are down in the southwest, but I also respect their lands here. But this brought, offering this prayer and blessing kind of brought some memories about growing up back home. As if you guys know about the Hopi Tribe and the Pueblos, we ground ourselves and our traditions and our culture a lot around agriculture and the earth and our relationship to everything that gives us life and gives us reason to live. So I'm glad that Tony Lodge asked me to do this, this blessing today. It means a lot to be able to do this for everyone. And I just wanna say that in this connection that we have with our Mother Earth and our Father Sky and everything around, we, one thing that stuck out was our relationship. And, you know, that's one thing I think that we want our earth to keep fighting for its life. But one thing that we need to do for ourselves is to have this, build this relationship with the earth and what it actually means. And of course, we're working on other relationships in our lives, but having this relationship with the earth is, I think, one of importance. And if we don't understand and have that connection, I think that a lot is lost in that beginning of how we respect, how we walk on this earth and how we, you know, live our lives outside of, you know, this building. As we walk along the rivers and Centennial Trail, you know, everything that we see and feel is something that we need to kind of hold ourselves accountable to. It's not only us. It's, and we have a part in every part of, you know, how we take care of the earth. So here we go. Grandfather, I ask that you give us, give us the strength, give us the understanding of what we need to carry forth in our relationship with the earth. When I ask you and thank you for everything you have done for us, I want to ask that you give us a new way of looking at life and how we need to connect ourselves with every living thing around us and the Mother Earth. We appreciate everything that you have given us and the life that you continue to give us and the air we breathe. We ask to bring and humble us in every way to connect ourselves with everyone around us and to build relationships and to come up with a lot of different ways that we can heal the earth around us. We ask that you continue to give us this honor in how we respect ourselves and our children that we need to do this for and all the generations ahead of us. Hello? And here's Tony Lodge.
Hi. Thank you for inviting us here today. We just went to leadership camp this weekend. Thirty-seven years of the Indian Youth Leadership Camp. Took ninety-three kids out to Medical Lake. And the Cavil tribe donated two-hundred tree seedlings that our children, our teenagers, were out there in the fire, replanting, reforesting. So this is a great time, even though there's hard times, we're reconnecting, like Shane said, and rebuilding. So I'm a Turtle Mountain Chippewa from North Dakota, one of the three hundred tribes that live here in Spokane County. So I appreciate you as our tribal council, working for native people in the city also. I, we aren't gonna do ceremony, but we are gonna do blessings. So our students, our kids, the same kids that planted those trees, made tobacco ties for you all. You know, tobacco, the most powerful plant, made of the earth, the sky, the sun, the water. And what we do with this is, is we put it around our house. We put it around our office. We, I have one in my purse, never without one. You never know when you need one to say a blessing or a prayer. So it's, we're off, the students are offering these to you tonight. It is Earth Day, but every day is Earth Day. So you make an offering at your leisure, but give thanks, give thanks. Like everything we have, water, food, everything, it comes from the earth. So thank you for inviting us.
Can I be honest? I need several. Thank you so much. In recognition of Earth Day, we are welcoming Twila Abrahamson, who is the Indigenous Roots and Reparation Foundation Executive Director, and she will speak to us on the state of the land. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight with each and every one of you and the cities, the efforts to honor our Mother Earths today. I'm coming on behalf of our organization, and I'm a Spokane tribal member, and on behalf of our mother, who isn't here anymore. Her name was Debbie Abrahamson. And for about thirty years, she worked on issues to bring awareness about some of the poisoning of our land on the Spokane Reservation from destructive industrialization, uranium mining, and that's how that still impacts the city of Spokane today. When she originally got involved in this movement, there was an effort to bring in radioactive waste from the east coast to the boundary of our reservation in Ford, Washington. That radioactive waste was scheduled to come through Spokane on rail and by some of the local community colleges. So it took a lot of effort of community education to get some of the agencies who were in charge at that time to stop those shipments of waste and not to permit that to come through our communities. So for her legacy, we continue to do this work and to make sure that we represent our community and our people to ensure that our waste isn't also damaging other communities along the way. We know that now we have a Superfund site on the reservation, and there's still radioactive waste that's transported through Spokane and down to the Four Corners area at the White Mesa Mill. The community members there are in opposition to this waste because it's keeping alive another contaminated site. So just wanna just say that in honor of our mother that we continue to educate the community about some of these ongoing impacts, but also to celebrate our successes and to celebrate the partnerships that have worked. And especially with this year being the, you know, the fifty-year anniversary of the Expo event and the World's Fair here in Spokane. It was a time of rejoice and a time of celebration for the tribes in this region. And we see that happening again this year. So we're excited to bring forward some of those and invite everybody in our entire community to come celebrate with us and learn about our indigenous cultures. But today, just in starting, you know, we just wanna reaffirm our commitment to sustainability as a city and also our commitment to the sacredness of Mother Earth, ecological unity, and the interdependence of all species. We also would like to move forward, making sure that public policies be based on mutual respect and justice for all peoples and free from any form of discrimination or bias. In order for us to look at the land and protect the land, we also have to look at each other as people and respect each other as people. So we wanna also thank those that are working towards that in our community and ensuring that the discrimination isn't allowed. You know, it's disheartening to hear some of the incidents that are happening in our community at a time where we're trying to prepare to invite people into our city. So it's just hard to think about those things. But we wanna make sure that when we're out there gathering these things and preparing for these big events in our city that we can honor our lands, honor our waters, and honor the families that are out there that are continuing to practice our traditions. Right now, it's a season for gathering roots in our surrounding community. The tribes, along the Columbia River, are holding their first food ceremonies. So we're honoring the plants that first grow in the springtime that sustained our people for thousands of years. And we're preparing to honor the salmon that used to swim in our rivers and the waterways that brought those salmon here to Spokane and made it such a vital place for trade, for economics. And so we have to honor those salmon, even though they don't make their way past the dams. Every year, we are hearing some more success, that more salmon are making their way further up along the dams. So just wanna appreciate the work of both the tribal elders and the leaders, the elected and non-elected that continue to move forward in asserting our sovereignty and helping us prepare our waterways and lands again for the return of salmon. That's what we hope to see in our generation. Right now, our salmon are brought to us in totes and on ice from some of the downstream fisheries. And that happened because of, our young people at our own gatherings were refusing to eat salmon. And so only forty years after the construction of the dams, our children were refusing to eat salmon. And so these treaties were made to make sure that we still had it as part of our diet because it used to be around seventy percent of what we ate as a people. So it's a real indicator species of how healthy our lands and waters are. And we will continue to pray, and we'll continue to prepare and clean up. And we just hope that policies are made with the indigenous people in mind and with the salmon in mind, knowing that we're still here. We're still continuing to use our resources. We're continuing to harvest from the land, the waters, and the mountains with our huckleberries. So again, thank you for your time and looking forward to all the success that we have this year and in the coming years and working towards sustainability here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We are now getting prepared to go into our legislative body. I just wanna remind everybody, when addressing the council, members of the public shall direct all remarks to the council president and shall confine their remarks to the matters that are specifically before the council at that time or, if speaking during open forums, shall confine their remarks to the affairs of the city. In order that evidence and expressions of opinions be included in the record and that decorum befitting a deliberative process be maintained, no modes of expression including but not limited to demonstrations, banners, signs, applause, profanity, vulgar language, or personal insults shall be permitted. To prevent disruption of council meetings, a speaker asserting a statement of fact may be asked to document and identify the source of the factual data being asserted. Under our new council rules, the consent agenda is not read, and Mr. Jacoby has our list of those who want to speak. So first up tonight on the consent agenda speaking is Justin Holler, Derek Azaro, William Hewings, and then Dennis Flynn.
Council President, as they're making their way down, can I request that we take number ten separate?
We can take number ten separate, thank you. You're up first, Justin, welcome. You have three minutes.
Justin Holler, District One. Don't have a lot to say. My consistent message is, what do you do with the money you already take slash steal? And I always vote for no higher taxes, no higher fees. It's just, you know, you're deplorable with the money you already wasted.
So Justin, which item are you speaking on the consent agenda?
I don't consent.
Thank you. Derek Azaro? Thank you. Will Hewings?
Good evening. My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown. So I'm here to show my support for the men and women that protect our safety here in Spokane. OPR 2024-0286 and OPR 2024-0289 represent important steps in ensuring the safety and effectiveness of our law enforcement personnel in Spokane, Washington. OPR 2024-0286 proposes the purchase and installation of a fixed targeting turning system for the Spokane Police Department rifle range. So this has been acquired through a GSA cooperative contract. And basically, I'm just, I'm for this. Also, OPR 2024-0289 seeks to procure police uniforms and related services through a comprehensive RFP process. So this encompasses fitting, alteration, repair, and inventory management of uniforms as well as provisions for pouches for external vest carriers. So supporting these resolutions isn't just about acquiring equipment or uniforms. It's about investing in the safety and well-being of our law enforcement officers and, by extension, the people of the city of Spokane. Because them are the first people you call when someone breaks into your house or breaks into your cars, SPD. So you get all these people coming up here not wanting us to fund or support our law enforcement, like they'd be the first ones to call SPD if something happened here, to protect them. So I want our law enforcement to be protected with the best equipment. And that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Dennis Flynn?
Hi, Council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Regarding OPR 2024-0286 for the target turning system, thank you for authorizing equipment useful in the effective training of our police officers. OPR 2024-0292 for the climate impact and resiliency planning, yay! We're spending four-hundred-and-twenty thousand for a consulting group on a problem that has changed from beware the coming ice age, when I was in grade school, to global warming will put us all underwater in my college years, to now the nebulous and all-encompassing climate change from the people smart enough to admit thermometers and growing cities will register higher because of asphalt and concrete and call that evidence, but are dumb enough to ignore thermometers in undeveloped urban areas and not registering higher and instead call you a nutcase for asking clarifying questions. Regarding OPR 2024-0291 and the hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar grant for the Community Connectors Program, my root objection to this type of funding is the unproven yet current thing narrative that I-90 was put where it is purposely to perpetuate systemic racism. What are the historical harms I-90 brought to East Central? And what are the ongoing harms? Do you think East Central would like to be called a lower-capacity community? By whose standards are you labeling a grouping of people instead of considering each person by his or her individual dignity? But hey, I guess it's all free money, and we'd be foolish not to take it, right? But the grant does include the responsibility of participating and contributing in the formal evaluation process, right? I do see sixty grand of the grant is to fund a person to manage that grant. So will you hire it out, hire a temp, or assign an FTE? And will you commit to eliminating that position at the end of the grant instead of adding it to our always-expanding city employee headcount? Looking at the grant, it says we will lease surplus lands that the state doesn't need for the interchange. Shouldn't we demand that land back for other purposes, such as the high-density middle housing y'all keep saying we need? Don't we have a mayor with special pull with the Department of Transportation? But no, instead, we're gonna use our tax dollars to lease back the land from the state that they already used our tax dollars to buy. If you don't find it ridiculous that our tax money goes to the state to buy land that we then have to use more of our tax money to lease, then you're not paying attention. Oh, and look what I found. Three of the top funders of Smart Growth America are the U.S. Department of Transportation, HUD, and the EPA. So even this grant, whose partial purpose it is to spend our tax dollars to lease land we already bought with our tax dollars, is paid for by our tax dollars. And a looksee through the Smart Growth America website shows their main principles appear lined with the fifteen-minute city concept where we'll all own nothing and be happy. Oh, yeah. And the webpage is chock full of the word equity. Wake up, sheeple. Your tax dollars used to fund a program whose purpose it is to spend your tax dollars to lease something your tax dollars already bought. What a sham.
We're gonna take number ten separately. Any other council commentary? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, except for item ten, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions? The consent agenda is passed. Number ten, Councilman McCarthia, commentary on that?
No comment.
Just wanna take it. So number ten is the consultant agreement with Burke Consulting for the climate impact and resiliency planning with comprehensive plan updates. Any council commentary on that? Okay, then all those in favor of number ten, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any notes?
Nay.
Abstentions? That passes. Thank you. Ms. Fister?
Special budget ordinances. Ordinance C-36507, amending ordinance number C-364627, passed by the city council November twenty-seven, 2023, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2024. Make in appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, 2024, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in. Accounting and Grants Fund, number one, decrease appropriation by eighty-five thousand dollars. A of the decreased appropriation, fifty-eight thousand dollars is removed solely from base wages. B of the decreased appropriation, twenty-seven thousand dollars is removed solely from associated various employee benefits. Number two, increase appropriation by eighty-five thousand dollars. A of the increased appropriation, eighty-five thousand dollars is provided solely for contractual services. B, there is no increase in the appropriation level of the Accounting and Grants Fund. This action arises from the need to provide appropriation authority to fund contractual services for grant research and writing.
Any council, any commentary? All those in favor, please vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36508, miscellaneous grants fund. Number one, decrease appropriation by thirty-four thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. A of the decreased appropriation, thirty-four thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars is removed solely from base wages for the AOC-DVITC 2023-2024 grant. Number two, increase appropriation by thirty-four thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. A of the increased appropriation, thirty-four thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars is provided solely for professional services for the AOC-DVITC 2023-2024 grant. This action arises from the need to provide appropriation authority to professional services to align with OPR 2023-0854.
There's no public comment. Any commentary, Council? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36509, general fund. Number one, increase appropriation by three hundred thousand dollars. A of the increased appropriation, three hundred thousand dollars is provided solely for election services provided by Spokane County in 2024. B, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the general fund. This action arises from the need to pay Spokane County for election services of ballot measures that were not budgeted for.
We have one public comment. Dennis Flynn?
Hey, Council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Ordinance C-36509, general fund appropriations, increase to pay Spokane County for election services of ballot measure that were not budgeted for. I'm just wondering which measures were not budgeted for. Could it possibly be strategize which measure to put on which calendar, ballot calendar option that provides the most likely possibility of voters not feeling overwhelmed, so they'll approve it? As in, instead of being most efficient with our money and consolidating things onto one ballot so we get the overall picture of what is being asked of us, and you spend the least amount possible in doing that voting? Instead, do we strategically decide to spend more of our money to put things across multiple ballot calendar options, taking advance of historically higher and/or lesser turnout and spreading tax increases out so they're not all on the same ballot? So that you might purposely manipulate, or maybe even a better word is nudge, the outcomes? Case in point, will you nudge us by asking the Parks Department to delay yet again? How long ago was their survey? Their request for property tax increases to some future ballot yet again because you think your best chance is getting the big property tax increase needed to cover our budget dilemma? And the Parks property tax increases not to have them on the same ballot because then the voters might reject one or both? I, for one, would prefer to stop the never-ending stream of ballots coming to my bell box and instead will it down to the most efficient number of as few as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36510, Fire EMS Fund. Number one, add one classified social response manager position from one to two in the CARES program. Number two, add two classified mental health coordinator positions from zero to two in the CARES program. Three, add one. Three, add one classified clerk 2 position from 0 to .5 in the CARES program. Number four, increase revenue by $500,000. A of the increased revenue, $500,000 is provided solely for interfund other general governmental services in the CARES program. Number five, increase appropriation by $500,000. A of the increased appropriation, $291,200, is to be provided solely for base wages and associated employee benefits in the CARES program. B of the increased appropriation, $78,800 is to be provided solely for operating supplies in the CARES program. C of the increased appropriation, $130,000 is to provide it solely for vehicles in the CARES program. And Opioid Response Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $1 million. A of the increased appropriation, $291,200 is provided solely to contra salaries and benefits. B of the increased appropriation, $208,800, is provided solely to interfund other professional services. C of the increased appropriation, $500,000, is provided solely to contractual services. This action arises from the proposal to expand the SFD Spokane Fire Department CARES program and create a high-utilizer and complex care initiative.
No public comment. Councilman McCatt Cardy?
Yeah, I support this, but after a lot of reflection and thought, I can't vote for it tonight. And the reason being, we are right now about to ask for a monstrous tax increase from the voters, to accumulate around 38 million a year. Now, it's a drop in the bucket, but over 17 years, this does generate about 775K a year. And I believe that we should be using those dollars to pay for the services that are in compliance with the settlement, but which help us to continue offering ongoing services. And so EMS, there's some law enforcement aspects of this, behavioral health aspects of this, that this could go to cover. And so while I support what's been identified as a need, I think the best use at a time when we are about to ask for a pretty monstrous tax increase is that we use this to help cover some of the expenses that are ongoing that it is eligible to cover.
Counselor Dylan?
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, I'm very supportive of this. I think this is a great example of a lot of interdepartment collaboration. I think it's a good follow-up to our conversation around fentanyl overdoses and opioids, and we've really seen, you know, more of the data that's come through from the Fire Department, how they are so often the first responders. And, you know, this is gonna be, and we're gonna see more funds coming from the Attorney General lawsuit, and I think that this is a great example of us using our dollars effectively.
Well, I'm in support of, we need to put those dollars to work. We've been collecting them now into year three, I believe, and they've been sitting in a fund, and they were being collected for a purpose such as these that we've identified. No more counsel commentary. Prepare to vote.
Ordinance C-36511, Miscellaneous Grants Fund. Number one, increase revenue by $130,000. A of the increased revenue, $130,000 is provided solely for grant revenue from Smart Growth America. Number two, increase appropriation by $130,000. A of the increased appropriation, $130,000 is provided solely for contractual services. This action arises from the award and acceptance of Smart Growth America's Community Connectors Grant.
We have one public comment. Dennis Flynn?
Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. For this OPR, I reviewed the Smart Growth America website, and I pulled some stuff from Wikipedia and the IRS for Smart Growth America. Per Wikipedia, Smart Growth America focuses on three specific priorities: climate change and resilience, advancing racial equity and creating healthy community. Yay, elites telling us how to live because they know better, even though they are no better than we are at determining for ourselves. The latest 990 from the IRS is 2022 for Smart Growth America, and it shows they received 4.3 million in grants and 1.4 million in service revenue. So this is a total of 5.7 million. Of that, they spent 3.4 million in salaries and 1.9 million in other expenses, for a total of 5.3 million. For those not worried, do do the math, that is 93% spent on salaries and other expenses. They paid out $301,000 in grants. And for anyone listening, you may recall when I was up here a minute ago, that three of the top 10 donors were federal departments. So that's a wonderful example of such efficient use of our tax dollars. 93% to salaries, and the travel and party expenses for those making salaries, and 7% actually ends up in a grant, whose purpose is to justify demanding even more tax dollars.
Thank you. Any counsel commentary? Prepare to vote.
Ordinance C-36512, Miscellaneous Grant Fund. Number one, increase revenue by $420,000. A of the increased revenue, $420,000 is provided solely for grant revenue from the Department of Commerce. Number two, increase appropriation by $420,000. A of the increased appropriation, $420,000 is provided solely for contractual services. This action arises from the award and acceptance of the Department of Commerce's Climate Planning Grant.
We have one public comment. Justin Holler?
Pass, you're not gonna listen anyway.
Thank you, Justin. Counsel commentary? Prepare to vote.
Resolution 2024-36, approving the 2024 Annual Action Plan Component of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan for CDBG Home and ESG Grant Programs, and Approval to Enter into Agreement with HUD and Awarded Organizations. Total Anticipated Grants Revenue: $5,412,056.
We have one public comment. Dennis Flynn?
Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Resolution 2024-0036, so let's just assume the federal government is way, way more efficient than Smart Growth America. Well, at least hope it's way more efficient than a 93% overhead rate. Let's give HUD and our city employees the benefit of the doubt and assume they only incur 20% overhead. That means it only costs us $6.5 million tax dollars to get back these grants totaling 5.4 million. Oh, yeah, and this 5.4 million comes with dictat strings that specify and/or restrict how we can spend the money. Imagine how much more we could do with that original $6.5 million, if you assume by 20%, going to local religious and nonreligious charities and organizations that would multiply it by the time and talent of us citizen volunteers to produce local initiatives to meet our local problems in the way that works best in our local community. Instead, we're encouraged to absolve ourselves of all responsibility to do something personally for our brothers and sisters, because we're told to just pay your taxes, the government will take it from there, and just shut up, plebe.
Thank you. Any counsel commentary? Counselor McCatt Cardy?
Yeah, this is one I've struggled with, in part because I think at this point in time, we need to be all-in with a regional approach, and unfortunately, we're just not quite there, which is incredibly frustrating, because I think that is the only way we are gonna make a dent. And so I have really gone back and forth on whether to support this, because it does not move us forward in that regional path. Ultimately, I am gonna vote for it. It's the final year, it's a one-year and the final year, and there are some good investments within it. But at this point in time, I think we have to start really thinking through these types of multi-pronged investments and make sure that it is furthering a regional strategy. That, again, that I think is the only way we are gonna really see ourselves exit some of the challenges that we are facing right now. And so I'll get behind this, but this is probably gonna be one of the last if it's not, if there isn't a big change in how we focus on these.
Any counsel commentary? Prepare to vote.
Resolution 2024-37 is deferred to April 29 agenda. Resolution 2024-38, directing city of Spokane planning services to initiate climate planning that implements the requirements of House Bill 1181, as part of the periodic update by conducting community engagement, analyzing climate impacts, and developing and integrating climate goals and policies to build community resilience and reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
We have several public comments. First all is Dream. And then Derek Azaro?
Good evening, City Council. City Council President, I'm here to talk about this resolution adopting these climate standards and updating our comprehensive plan. I think any amount that we work towards this is good, but any amount that we're doing is not enough. The city's emissions goals are, I believe, net zero by 2050? If we have a problem, and we know we have a problem, and that problem is burning fossil fuels, we don't wait 50 years to say we're gonna solve it then, right? Anything that we can do to get out ahead of these targets is good. Regarding the proposed amendment, I wanted to specifically highlight the fact that multiple governmental and international organizations have conducted studies on the economic impacts of not doing anything about climate change, and have found it's in the trillions and trillions. And nothing in this proposed amendment talks about analyzing not doing anything in comparison to doing things. And it also talks about reducing carbon, not talking about other greenhouse gases. And just be clear that anything that we can do right here, right now, is, we're already seeing the economic impacts. And some insurance companies are not, have pulled out of the fire zones that are affected by our recent local wildfires. And if we look at California, some insurers are pulling out of large swaths of California entirely. And if we talk about people's livelihoods, that's a really important thing, and there's nothing that you can do as a city to make insurers insure these places, as far as I'm aware. So that's a big economic impact that we need to think about. We need to think about the economic impacts of not doing things, and the effects of not doing these climate reduction goals on working families and everybody who lives here in Spokane. Thank you.
Thank you, Dream. Jarrett?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Next is Justin Holler?
Pass, you won't listen anyway.
Dennis Flynn?
Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. $420,000 in grants from the Washington State Department of Commerce, otherwise known as our tax dollars, and even more coming through in 2029, as in more of our own tax dollars coming back to us after Olympia takes its cut, of course. Gotta love it when the elites tell us plebes what's best for us, because they obviously know better, which is weird, because they are no better than we are at figuring out our everyday lives for ourselves. Let's read some of the words in this ordinance. Quote, "Climate change does not impact everyone equally," end quote. Quote, "A climate policy advisory team that includes leaders within overburdened communities that are most impacted by the changing climate conditions and whose insight will lead to the most equitable outcomes," end quote. Quote, "We'll focus on both quantitative and qualitative data through the lens of climate and equity," end quote. Quote, "An equitable approach will be taken to look at the intersections of race, income, gender, ability, and other disparities to understand our communities' vulnerabilities and those at highest risk for climate impacts," end quote. Quote, "To support climate justice and equity, the PPP prioritizes equitable practices," end quote. Quote, "Particularly frontline communities who experience the first and worst consequences of climate change," end quote. Quote, "Ensure no community is sacrificed to climate impacts or to suffer emissions disproportionately," end quote. Quote, "Ensure energy generation is renewable and equitable," end quote. Quote, "Zoning, land use, housing policy," end quote. After digesting that word salad of elitist garbage, I need to eat some fiber. Remember when I spoke recently about Spokane P and that we should expect higher temps in our urban areas, as we construct more asphalt and concrete? And I said rural areas have almost no temperature change? Well, I went to look at the government data, and I pulled for Boundary Dam, where they have data back to the 50s. You know what you find when you compare year-by-year basis, even a decade-by-decade basis? Almost no change, maybe a slight increase. And I bet if you had overhead pictures of the area from 1950 to now, you would see a progressive increase in asphalt and concrete, even in this rural area. And I'll repeat the comparison I made in the past. If you consider our arenas having 10,000 seats going from 240 parts per million of carbon dioxide to 340, it's like going from three seats to four. Nitrogen is by far the largest component of our atmosphere, and oxygen is 20%. Do you know how that 20% of oxygen is made? By plants eating the carbon dioxide and making oxygen. So we have 0.03% of our atmosphere is carbon dioxide, and we're dependent on that to feed the plants to make the oxygen we need, and you're telling me we need less CO2. Yeah, sure. You betcha.
Thank you. Counsel commentary? Prepare to vote.
Resolution 2024-39, to participate in the Smart Growth America Community Connectors Program to build local capacity and reconnect the Fifth Avenue community in the East Central neighborhood and co-design projects alongside the most impacted communities for repairing the damage of divisive highway infrastructure.
We have one public comment. Mr. Dennis Flynn?
Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Again, I want to point out that according to their 2022-990, Smart Growth America took in 5.7 million and spent 3.4 in salary and 1.9 in other expenses, which to me means travel, meals, parties, and other spiffs, for a total of 5.3 million. Of the 5.7 million they brought in during 2022, they paid out $301,000 in grants, and Charity Navigator has them rated three out of four stars with an 87%. Talk about grading on the curve. My guess would be it looks like their three priorities of climate change and resilience, advancing racial equity, and creating healthy communities must require a whole bunch of lobbyists and other vampires sucking off our public tax dollars to collect decent salaries while living the luxury life of having their meals, dues, lodging, and extravaganzas paid for significantly by our tax dollars, lest you forget that the Department of Transportation, HUD, and EPA are three of their top 10 donors. Department of Transportation, environmental justice, transportation, electrical vehicles, road diets, public transportation. HUD, climate science, overburdened communities, most impacted, intersectionality, suffer emissions disproportionately. EPA, environmental justice, climate justice, equitable approach, highest risk for climate impacts. Is it all starting to sound like all of this, this topic and the others I spoke on tonight, are a complete mixture of a load of baloney sausage to you two?
Thank you. Any counsel commentary? Counsel, I'll start with Counselor Navarrete.
Thank you, Council President. So as a 30-plus-year resident of East Central, and after immigrating from Mexico City and living in that neighborhood for so long, I'm happy to support this and happy to see that we're finally going to get an uplift in the neighborhood. And also to add, our very first home was demolished as part of the whole, all the houses to build the North-South Freeway. So this is really good for our community.
Counselor Dylan?
Yeah, I'll just echo that. I mean, we've seen what the construction of this interstate did to East Central, and we've also seen steps taken. We can't change what happened, but to try and right some of the historical wrongs and what's happening along Fifth Avenue, we're definitely seeing a lot of, I think, good community collaboration and concentration of efforts to really revitalize the block. And it's just really exciting to see.
It's very exciting for me to see, because I lived in East Central, I still do, when the first freeway came through and split my neighborhood. So I've lived through the inequities of what's happened in East Central. I've lived through the redlining and the impacts, environmental, socioeconomic, which still exist today. This small grant is coming in to help a neighborhood that's been disinvested in, help it reimagine itself from the inequities that's been fostered upon it. So I'm excited for this money to come in and support community and have a community rebuild itself, not from the top down, but from the bottom up. And all those government agencies, yay, they were the ones that impacted us. Why shouldn't they come in and help pay to right some of the wrongs? So you can tell I'm very passionate about this. I was part of the East Fifth Avenue Initiative that happened several years ago, and this resolution, I look forward to great things happening in East Central, but I look forward to great things happening in all of our neighborhoods. Prepare to vote.
Resolution 2024-40, Appointing Members to the Housing Action Subcommittee.
One public comment. Will Hewings?
My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown. As a proud minority veteran, I am deeply concerned about the fairness and inclusivity of decision-making processes. I must express my strong disgust to Resolution 2024-028. I must express my strong disgust to Resolution 2024-0040, which appoints members to the Housing Action Subcommittee. My concerns stem from the apparent lack of diversity and expertise within the appointed members of this committee. It's concerning to see a group predominantly composed of individuals from one political perspective, mainly Democrat, without representation from the broader spectrum of people. And I've looked at the list of names. I know a lot of them. So furthermore, the language used in this resolution is troubling. Terms like excluded historic communities, racial equity, and marginalized communities are vague and lack clarity. As a member of a minority group myself, I might as well say MAGA, I find it offensive that this resolution seemingly categorizes individuals based on their race, political affiliation, or other characteristics rather than prioritizing expertise inclusive, inclusivity. So basically, I'm against this. This, this was actually the list of names. I guess this has been sitting around since, what, 2021? It's a couple of years old, but maybe you might want to go back in and make it, you know? Because I know a lot of people in this community. And I see names on there. There's some that come to the city council meeting and I don't think it's, plus, the other thing I had before I ended, something else I found really offensive. So homelessness is a complex issue that affects individuals from various backgrounds. So as a veteran, I just find it offensive that veterans are put on the very last. And I can't, my long little speech here, but if you read through it, I'm going to forward it to you. I don't know why veterans, if it wasn't for veterans, myself, you guys, we wouldn't be doing this. And that's a fact. And it's very offensive that we're put on the very end of the list in your wording. So you can go look through this little, your wording and see what I'm talking about. But thank you.
Thank you, Will. Councilman Cat Card.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank Nicolette for all of her work in trying to kind of pull this thing, maintain this and pull it back together. I, I used to be the liaison on this committee, and I think since probably the third meeting, it really has been out of balance. There's just not a lot of balance to it. It's overloaded with one side. And by that, I don't necessarily mean partisan politics, but from the housing continuum, which really crosses partisan lines, I think there is not enough people across that continuum representing different expertise. And that's what you need on a committee like this, not just passion, passionate ideas, but actual expertise who understand fundamentally how housing gets built, how it works, how the finances work, how it all comes together. That is really, really important. I don't feel that the composition includes enough of these different voices and perspectives and expertise. And so I'm not going to support this today. But I do just want to thank Nicolette, who is the council staff person who helps run this committee. I think she has been really, really challenged with trying to get good people to participate, with trying to keep the, the group together, to identify exactly the right roles and responsibilities for this group. And I know that's been a lot of hard work and it's still ongoing. And so I just want to make sure to, to thank her very clearly and publicly, but at this time, I just won't be able to support this based on the composition.
You have council commentary? I will, Councilman Navarrete.
Our boards, committees, and subcommittees are open to anyone who are of diverse backgrounds, anything, so anybody's able to join. Nobody singled out. Just want to clarify that.
Thank you. So I'll be supporting this. This group of people have been almost at the beginning since this committee was formed. We are now actually formalizing it so we can get into the process of looking at other board members and their diverse makeup in the housing industry as we go forward. But this is kind of our first step to formalize this committee, and then we can take on other challenges and other opportunities.
Prepare to vote.
Excuse me. Ordinance C 36504, altering the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, creating the Lodging Tax Advisory Program, amending sections 4.30.010 and 0.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and adding a new section to Chapter 4.30 of the Spokane Municipal Code deferred from April 8, 2024 agenda.
We have two public comments, Derek Bositos and Will Hughings.
Good evening, City Council President and council members. I am Derek Bositos with the Washington Hospitality Association, representing over 700 local restaurants and hotel locations. I am here in support of ordinance C 36504. I'm excited to get these LTAC or Taxi Grants out to the event organizers. This is a fund meant to stimulate our tourism and encourage events and festivals to bring people from over 50 miles away to come and enjoy our events and stay at our amazing hotels. I want to thank all the committee members for their great work drafting this ordinance, and I want to thank council members at Pone for coming up with the name. Thank you.
That's the point of information.
We will not ask you to repeat it at this time. Will Hughings?
Good evening, good evening again. My name is Will Hughings and I live downtown. I've already spoke on this probably a couple of times, but I'm obviously against this ordinance because I'm very unhappy with downtown. Just, this is dirty, it's not clean, and this is my neighborhood. So you guys want to basically, well, first off, you changed the name. This name is kind of, well, I call it Democrat Spokane Tourism and Cultural Investment, T A C I. LTAC actually sounded a lot better. But this ordinance, which updates the Spokane Tourism and Cultural Investment Grants Committee to reflect state law and establish grant evaluation criteria, fundamentally misses the mark on the priorities of the city, especially like downtown. How can you attract businesses and people to even come? Do you know how many people I talked to that live here that won't even come downtown? So you want to get people from out, from all over our country to come here to these events, for events, and you can't even do what I want you to do as someone that lives here. I come up here and I complain to the city about all kinds of stuff, nothing gets solved. It's kind of pathetic. I went on a walk for it with Councilman Bingo and showed him exactly what, and so hopefully he gets back to you guys about that. But back to what I was saying, I'm, I'm against this, and there's more to it, but I'm just going to leave it at that. And I will forward my message to Geako so he could forward it to you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilman Rizapong?
No. I'm very excited to get this grant going, getting it out there. I do have to correct the record. I did not come up with a name. It was by committee, and the committee brainstormed ideas together, not me. I just wrote on the whiteboard. But yeah, the tourism and cultural investment grants will be really great for our community. The committee is working as quickly as possible, meeting again this week to finalize the application and get that out. So people should be on the lookout for those applications to go live very soon.
I will comment. I, again, there was a conference of Black churches in Spokane just recently, and they were staying downtown at one of our major hotels, and they were walking the Centennial Trail and looking at the river, and they commented on how clean and how safe felt to them downtown. So really, there is a perception of who live here and who visits here and what's that's like. I just know we are continuing to try to make our downtown as best as we possibly can for everybody, for those who live here and for those who visit. Prepare to vote.
Thank you.
First reading, ordinance C 36513, relating to the Fire Code, amending section 17 F.110.010 of the Spokane Municipal Code, adopts the 2021 Wildland Urban Interface Code.
Madam Clerk, we take all testimony on first reading together.
Okay, great. Ordinance C 36514, relating to the Paper Cuts Code Amendments, 2024 Project, Making Minor Changes to the United Unified Development Code That Clarify Government Process and Procedures, Align With Legislative Requirements and/or Make Clerical Corrections in the Spokane Municipal Code, Amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 4.16.040 Membership, 178.020.020B Definitions, 178.020.080H Definitions, 17C.120.110 Limited Use Standards, 17C.122.070 Center and Corridor Allowed Uses, 17C.122T.001 Table, 17C.122.070-1 Center and Corridor Allowed Uses, 17C.190.450 Medical Centers, 17C.200.050 Street Tree Requirements, 17D.010.020 Concurrent Test, 17D.010.030 Certificate of Capacity, 17D.075.180 Appendix A Impact Fee Schedule, 17G.020.040 Amendment Frequency, 17G.061.010 Summary of Land Use Application Procedures, 17G.061.320 Notice of Decision, 17G.070.030 Development Standards, and 17H.010.120 Alleys, and adopting a new section, 17C.190.255 Public Parking Lot, creating a new use category description. Ordinance C 36515, relating to residential rental properties and establishing minimum notice period for residential rent increases, amending sections 10.57.130 and 10.57.140 of the Spokane Municipal Code, creating a new section, 10.57.160 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and establishing an effective date. Ordinance C 36516, establishing a definition of emergency for the purposes of governing legislation of the city council and ensuring the appropriate use of emergency ordinances, and adding a new section, 1.01.080, to the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Thank you. I believe we have 18 public comments on this. We're going to start with Derek Azaro, Terry Anderson, and John Alder. Welcome, Derek.
Derek Azaro, District 1. On the center and corridor, you're working on revising that. I'd like to throw in that wineries and breweries are allowed in these overlays, but fast foods are not. I'd like to see the fast food stricken off that. There's already plenty of codes that rely, that they have to do, you know, it's already on the books, there's already codes there. The code, the corridor, you know, center corridor overlay basically goes for the property owner. If you have like a, you know, level one industrial, and then they also have, you know, center and corridor on there, they can, you know, it's their choice which way they want to go. They want to go with retaining their industrial site, or they can build apartments and do whatever they want with it. So after watching what happened recently with emergency ordinance done to kick out a fast food on the 29th Street, there is really no evidence to support that as far as pedestrian, walking, and safety and on the sidewalks and such. If you go up there, you can see that there's no crosswalk lines on most of those intersections. If you look at the Panda Express corner where Safeway is, there's no lines there. So all that responsibility of public safety on those streets really falls on the city, not necessarily on the shopping center owner or the fast food business. So it's more like a punishment to do that when they already have all these codes that they have to go by when they build. So any councilman that uses that as some sort of a weapon against going after a fast food business is because of their political beliefs or otherwise, I feel is very wrong. You just eliminated jobs, you took away revenue, you know, it's based on the opinion of the Lakin Heights Neighborhood Council, they didn't want it there. Like I said, there was actually really no pure facts to support that center and corridor overlay at that particular time because this fast food business was already in process of permits. So to cut them off by using that as like a, a blocking point for some political favor to a neighborhood organization is really wrong. It does affect jobs, like I said, and employment and, you know, taxes and such. You know what, Dylan? You can look at me when I'm talking to people, you know?
Sir, please suggest all your comments to Council President. Thank you.
Well, I'll take note that he's doing the very thing that people back here do, make fun of people when they're talking. He was the one that did that. I just feel I'm against it and always have been, whether he likes it or not. It was, like I said, not supported with any facts. You just said earlier in the meeting that if we come up here and talk, we have to give facts when we say things. But in fact, you passed an ordinance that affected that business and that landlord. So that's my opinion on it. Thank you.
Terry Anderson?
She's online. Go ahead, Terry. Whenever you're ready, you're unmuted.
For the Spokane Office of the Tenancy Unit of Washington State, and I am serving currently by on the ordinance to extend notice periods for rent increase.
Yes, go ahead, Terry.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay, okay. First, I want to thank you for inviting Toilette Abrahamsen to open tonight's meeting, and I want to thank her for naming her mother Deb Abrahamsen, who was my very close and best friend, and whose dedication to environmental justice has made Spokane a better place to live. I am also reminded of Deb telling me stories about the first person who was evicted in the city of Spokane, and that was Chief Spokane Gary, who is, who now has a city park in Spokane named in his honor. Deb also educated me about the first incidence of gentrification in the city of Spokane during Expo 74. Peaceful Valley was where Spokane tribal members who did not move and locate to the Spokane Reservation when it was established in 1881 and remained in Spokane. The industrial cleanup of Expo 74 caused taxes to increase on the homes of the original inhabitants who were then gentrified out of their homes and neighborhoods. This brings me to why I'm speaking here today. I'm here to urge you to pass the ordinance to extend notice periods for rent increases. Rent increases drive up homelessness in Spokane. 60 days is not enough time when tenants receive huge rent increases. Tenants will move when they cannot afford the increase, even when there's nowhere to move to. Renters in Spokane are disproportionately Black and Brown, so it is our communities of color who suffer the most with huge rent increases. I want to thank Councilmember Paul Dillon for hearing the concerns of renters and who introduced this ordinance. I also want to remind you that the 30-year mortgage is a federal law that makes housing affordable for homeowners. The city of Spokane can enact laws to make housing affordable for renters. I urge you to give tenants more time to find housing or increase their monthly income so they do not become unhoused. Thank you. And please vote yes for ordinance to extend rent increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next, we have John Alder and then Steve Corker.
John Alder, a member of Spokane, and over 40 years I was a renter, so I understand the changes in rent. For instance, in the 80s, you might spend only 25% to 30% of your income to pay your rent. Now, even though we had a minimum wage of only 35 in those days, our deposits may be topped down at $50. There was no carpet cleaning deposit, which usually don't get used at all, no application fees, it didn't cost an arm and a leg to get your pet to move into your apartments. It was difficult still maybe to get money to pay for your, to move, but it still was reasonably reasonable that you could do it in a relatively short period of time. Here we are in 2020s, paying 40%, 50% of our income for, for, for our rent, and our deposits are at least 10 times higher than they used to be. Again, the carpet cleaning deposit, which very seldom gets used, application fees $50 to $75 for every application you do, ridiculous pet deposits of $200 to $500 apiece, and again, it's on top, as I say again, paying rent of at least 50% of your wages versus 25%, 30% of your wages in 1980s. This hundred and eighty day notice still might not be enough to help people move to their new home. No question about it. It is necessary today to offer some kind of hand. I urge all of you voting on this, remember how much, how much it would hurt you to try to pay for the cost of move today. There should only be one vote to make. Yes for ordinance three six five one five. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Corker, and I'm representing the Landlord Association of the Inland Northwest. The legislature had an opportunity to act on a number of bills in the recent session, and they chose not to implement an extension or a modification of the sixty-day notice. Why did they do that? Because they felt that ordinances such as this had a negative impact on the availability of low-income housing. You've been provided a copy of the report from the Seattle City Council on a similar impact that it had on the availability of low-income housing. And that report not only said that the consequences unintended of a number of the actions that came out of the legislature in the Seattle City Council, again, affected the availability and the inventory of low-income housing. Recently, a study was done by the University of Washington that suggested that the mom and pops are dead, and that it's being taken over by large corporations in industry. That's not the case in Spokane. In Spokane, I'm a member of association, has over five hundred members, and they control about twelve hundred homes. And I had six letters come in, in our membership renewal period over there, saying that things were so tight that they were having to sell their properties on the market. The majority of our small landlords provide homes to families, and families need homes. Apartments are not, a one or two-bedroom apartment is not what families need in this town. And so many of our small landlords are being so negatively impacted by what's happening that is driving the private sector out of low-income housing. Now, maybe your goal is to have all public housing or low-income housing, a public housing. If you had all the money in the world, it would take ten to fifteen years to build that property and inventory. And in the meantime, we have to do everything we can to keep people in their homes right now. And I'm watching the sale of large apartment houses because they can't afford to do not just safety or maintenance, but the aesthetic requirements. And big investors come in, buy them, remodel them, and all of a sudden, the rents go from six or seven hundred up to a thousand or twelve hundred. On Monroe Street, they have an apartment that's twenty-five hundred dollars for a two-bedroom apartment. That doesn't include parking and some of the other type of fees.
Thank you, Steve. Your time's up.
Thank you.
We have Dave Billsland, and then Sherri Barnett.
Good evening, folks. Dave Billsland from Logan. You see, we do talk. We are friendly. We talk across the aisle, as every one of you guys knows how to do. I'm fully in favor of this, except that I don't think under three percent should get any break. They still need to be at the full six months. People need six months to move easily, if not more. If I had to move, I don't know what the hell I'd do. I had one buddy, when he needed to move, he had to take out a loan to move. Isn't that ridiculous? You got to go into debt so you have a house over your head? We need six months, period, no matter what the percentage is. I don't care. My own rent went from five and a quarter to six fifty two years ago. This year, it started in at nine fifty. That's a fifty-five percent hike. Now, fortunately, I'm on housing, so it doesn't ding me personally that much. I'm paying about another twenty-five or thirty bucks. But it's still ridiculous to charge that much for the apartment I'm in. So please, make sure that there's six-month requirement. That is being humane because right now, sixty days, I couldn't find a place. Could any of you find a place in sixty days? I have my doubts, no offense, but it's just, we need that more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Sherri Barnett, and then Alan Hurst after that.
Council President Wilkerson and all members of the City Council, Sherri Barnett, Spokane. All right, I have a little old place that I rent out very reasonably. Once, most of them are very grateful, but once in a while, people who are small and have no lot of money find that the people they got in there are not doing real well, so they need to ask them to leave. Now, I know it's really hard to find a place here in Spokane, but all, I've been coming here for a long, long time. You've been giving great tax exemptions to big apartment buildings, and these big apartment buildings are going up everywhere. They're in competition for little people's houses and little people's rent, and they have money for attorneys, they have money for really checking out all kinds of references. You need to make it easier for small people, small homes and businesses to adapt their properties, add extra. It's legal now to do it as far as zoning is concerned, but very expensive to actually do it. You need to simplify those rules so that more people can take a garage and turn it into a small apartment at a very reasonable price. That is also going to help a lot. If you quit doing all this tax exemption, they're raising that rate, they're having wonderful, very fine places, they're giving out government subsidized places, and all of the little people are in competition, and they are tired, and most of them are just selling their property and leaving. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Alan Hurst, and then Andrew Rolls.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I am opposed to the C thirty-six five one five. I've been in the rental business for quite a number of years. It's kind of a cottage industry here in Spokane or has been, and we've provided a lot of housing for a lot of people over the years. And people like me, our rents are low, are lower than the market in normal cases. Now, when a tenant moves out, we have to raise the rents because we have to stay competitive, and we have to be able to pay the expenses. We can afford if we're making enough money, we can afford to be able to hold off on, on certain conditions, or we can, if we have enough money to be able to do that. But if we're broke, if we're about to lose our place, then we lose, our tenant loses, everybody's out. We get to know our tenants, and so because of that, we don't want to raise our rents. Most people in my situation, and I think it sounds like the lady that was just spoke, we're small, we have just a few little rentals, and by putting all these regulations on us, you're actually causing us not to be able to continue in this business. And we're running on the lead, or the trailing edge of rent. I talked to a guy the other day that said, you know, he's been renting to this gal for fifteen, twenty years, and he can't raise her rent, she can't afford it. So because of who he is and who she is, he's continued to rent to her, and because of the regulations that we're talking about, he come to the house the other day and says, I got to go, I got to sell, I've got to go. And when that happens, it'll be sold at top dollar. And so the next owner is going to, in order to be able to pay for that, is going to have to improve, he's going to be the leading edge on the rents, where we're on the trailing edge. We really need to be, let alone, we've been in, I've been in this business for decades, and it's a small, just a few little places, but it has, it has been very beneficial to the people that I've rented. I've rented to people that have been in disaster crisis situations, and I've rented to them, and some of them turn out to do, some of them are good friends of mine now. But the thing is, is because of the regulations, I just tell people, look, I can't do that anymore. I cannot take a risk. Some of the tenants that I have today, I would not take the risk to rent to them now because I would be over a barrel and possibly lose my places.
Thank you, Alan.
Well, Council President and members of council, good evening. I'm Andrew Rawls with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. On behalf of the members of the DSP, I speak tonight in opposition to the Residential Rental Properties Notification Ordinance. Our policy platform addresses our board's position on development regulations directly. We quote, "support incentives to create new housing at all levels of affordability," and oppose state and local legislative efforts and regulations that would delay or harm that ability, the ability to do so. Rather than increasing regulations, here are a handful of practical steps council could take to enhance the development in downtown. Number one, enact Senate Bill sixty-one seventy-five, the Office to Residential Conversion Incentive. Number two, reduce or eliminate height restrictions on Spokane Falls Boulevard parcels across from Riverfront Park. Number three, provide policy and/or fiscal support to Mayor Brown's initiative to establish a rapid response team for the city's permitting process and pass systematic reforms to the permitting process. Number four, support policies that grow our region's building trades workforce. And number five, support passage of a federal tax credit for conversion of commercial to residential property. Council President, thank you for all the work you did at last year's legislative session that helped to get condo liability reform passed. Councilmembers Oppone and other sponsors, thank you for passing the Pavement to People Ordinance as well. These are the kinds of policies that deliver more options to Spokane's residents and help to contain the costs of rent. More options is the relief they need, not more regulation. This and similar policies all have regulatory compliance costs, which, as you've heard, get passed on to tenants. They can also have the effect of reducing the value of real estate and making investment opportunities elsewhere more appealing than here. If there was ever a time to focus on building a thriving business sector in downtown and Spokane in general, now is that time. With interest rates where they're at and with uncertainty at other levels, your focus on building a strong business climate can make a vital difference for Spokane's residents. We acknowledge the humanitarian intent of the notifications policy, but the surest most effective way to deliver predictability to tenants is to increase the supply of housing. We strongly support and are grateful for council's current and past work to support on increasing housing supply, and encourage you to focus your limited time on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We have Steve Wareham and then Daniel Clemmie.
Hello, my name's Steve Wareham. I just wanted to, I'm a landlord. I also work for the Landlord Association. So when you guys passed the last ordinance, you were saying, hey, we'll find out if we're going to lose landlords once we get them registered. Well, you lost landlords, small mom and pop landlords before they even registered. They said, we're done. Now there's some that are still on the fence. What I want to talk about right now is if I wanted to take a tenant from, say, Catholic Charities, Goodwill, or Family Promise, and I said, hey, I want to rent to them on a six-month lease, just so I can get to know them, make sure this is going to work out or not. If I did that, I have to give them a rent, their rental contract, and a rent increase notice on the same day. And when I figure out how much do I need to increase my rents, I have to look at what is coming down the pike. Lisa Brown has a public safety proposal, one dollar per thousand assessed value. On an average-priced property that's renting out, there's thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month. I have to increase the rent to cover that cost. The City Council seems to want to increase the property taxes one percent every year. I have to count that in. My insurance goes up every year, water, sewer, garbage, who knows if that's going up, and then I have to account for inflation and repairs and maintenance on my properties. Inflation's at five, six, eight percent. So when I factor in how much do I need to raise the rent, and I'm saying, okay, I need to give their rent increase notice sixty days in advance, but it's got to go for the whole year that they're living there, plus sixty days in advance. So I have to know a year in advance what are my projected costs going to be when I project out what do I need to raise the rents for to cover all my operating costs. Just, here's another example. The average low-income house costs about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A landlord has to put twenty-five percent down, say, seventy thousand dollars down. Your payment, property tax, insurance on all that, two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars just to cover everything. The average rent for a low-income housing person is a thousand six hundred dollars. So when you drive the mom and pop landlord out of business, who was having to rent for a thousand six hundred, say, for a three, four-bedroom house, and now it has to be two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight just to make everything wash, so you have a, you have a good asset with the small mom and pop landlords that are left. Why drive them the rest of the way out of business? Some of them are on the verge of just saying, I just need one more reason to sell my properties and go.
Thank you. Daniel?
Good evening, Council President. My name is Daniel Clemmie, and I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed ordinance on behalf of the Rental Housing Association of Washington. The proposed ordinance presents significant discrepancies from RCW fifty-nine eighteen two forty regarding the definition and criteria for retaliation. While state law provides clear guidelines for what constitutes retaliation by housing providers, the ordinance introduces vague language and vague terms and fails to align with the precise language of the RCW. This discrepancy introduces confusion and legal ambiguity, leaving both tenants and housing providers vulnerable to potential disputes and litigation. Furthermore, the ordinance fails to require tenants to be current in rent and performance of tenant duties before invoking anti-retaliation protections. This omission undermines the principle of accountability and could incentivize irresponsible behavior by tenants, ultimately eroding the trust between housing providers and the renters. Additionally, this ordinance lacks presumptions for retaliation or mechanisms for rebuttal as outlined in RCW fifty-nine eighteen two fifty. These legal safeguards are crucial for ensuring a fair and balanced process in cause of alleged retaliation. It is crucial that the definition and criteria for determining retaliation under the city ordinance align precisely with the state law. Any deviation from this standard risks creating confusion, inconsistency, and unfair treatment within our rental housing system. Moreover, I draw your attention to the findings of the City of Seattle's Auditor's Report released in December of two thousand and twenty-three. This report highlights the real-world consequences of similar regulations enacted elsewhere, including decreased affordability, reduced housing options across income brackets, and a decline in the diversity of available rental housing types. These findings underscore the potential ramifications of regulatory changes in our communities. In light of these concerns, I urge you to not pass this ordinance. The potential consequences outlined in the audit report are far too grave to ignore. Instead, let us engage in collaborative policymaking that considers the needs of all stakeholders involved. By working together, we can develop solutions that promote housing affordability and protect the rights of both tenants and housing providers. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Vandenberg, and then Billy DC.
Hello, Council President, members of the City Council. It is good to see you guys again. It has been a hot minute. I miss seeing you guys every day. As you know, I spent time working for the City Council. I wish. I'm here tonight, so I'll hope to see you guys under happier circumstances in the future. Most of you know Uh, most of you know me from my time working with the City Council as an LA and then as the Director of Operations for the Mayor's Office for over a year. I hope to bring a unique perspective to you as someone who has worked within the City Council and the Mayor's Office and now is a small property owner, owner and manager. I have a pretty deep understanding of how this policy affects homeowners. Uh, my husband and I own a singular rental over in the Shadle District. Um, we live in Minnehaha, and we live in a house that's, um, you know, not great. We purchased it, we rehab it, and then we really hope to rent it out in the future. We try to make regular updates to the house to keep a great tenant in there. Like I said, we've only done one. We're living in our second, and we hope to keep that going. I feel really fortunate because I was raised in real estate. My whole world is real estate. I hope to continue that my whole world is real estate. Um, I know that I, I know the process really well. Not all small mom-and-pop landlords know the process. They don't know how to engage. They don't know the rules. And when we continue to do really tough legislation like this, that's confusing and tough to understand, that's when you start using these, when you start losing these units. I hope that you were all able to see my email I sent earlier today. If you didn't, I would encourage you to read it. I'm not gonna go over all those points again. You guys have my contact information. You'll see those points. Um, this ordinance, it will raise rents. It will harm tenants that I would hope you were trying to protect, and it will decrease the availability of rentable units. It will push landlords regardless, citywide, to raise rents preemptively. Not only this, but the language around retaliation is not in line with the current RCW. So I hope that we can look at that before you guys are voting on this next week. Why, okay, where is the fairness of requiring landlords, me and my sweet husband, to plan four to six months in advance where you guys are only asked for about two to three weeks' notice? That's really frustrating for me. I have to pile through the agenda. I work two jobs already, so to keep up with what council is doing that may or may not affect me as a citizen, you guys only need to give us a couple weeks' notice, and it's cruising. I've been a part of the process. I know how fast it is. It is more than a full-time job, and I appreciate you guys for doing that. I continue to hear the personal story from the dais of an employee who received a 60-day notice of a rent increase. It's $85 month, uh, more a month. If that employee is making minimum wage, it would take that employer 49 cents an hour raise to help that employee not live out of their car. I appreciate your time and consideration for my concerns.
Thank you. Billy DC?
Uh, Billy Dees, District One. Yeah, it was close enough. It happens a lot. Um, thank you all. Uh, thank you, President, and I thank all of the, uh, council members for all that you do to do your best to try to make Spokane a great place for all of us. Um, I'm here tonight representing, uh, property owners as well as tenants. Um, I do own a property management company here in Spokane. Uh, and so I feel like I'm in this unique position to see and hear, uh, from both sides. Um, it absolutely breaks my heart when we have to evict a tenant or we get a call from a tenant who's like, "My car broke down, and now I have to decide whether I'm gonna spend money to repair my car or belate on rent." Uh, however, um, as, as our business goes, we also have to keep in mind the property owners. Basically, all of our owners are small-time, mom-and-pop-type, um, landlords. They're not getting rich. Most of them are maybe making $100 per unit after all expenses. Uh, a lot of times, they're hiring us because the laws and the regulations have gotten so much that they can't even keep up. And I, I can tell you that there's been several times where we've taken over where a tenant has been three, four, five, six months behind in rent, and that owner keeps trying to, to get them out, uh, but didn't, you know, cross the T or dot the I. Um, and so, you know, I know it's hard to kind of feel bad for landlords and that it does come from a place of privilege to be able to own a rental property. Uh, a lot of these folks have worked really hard, saved money, worked two and three jobs, and that was what they decided to do. Um, and they treat it as if it's a small business, because that's what it is. They invest, they look for a return. Most of them are looking for a return in equity as they own the property for 10, 15, 20 years. Um, they don't really make a profit per month. Uh, but with this ordinance and being able to have to give tenants, um, a six-month notice in order to do a rent increase, most of the time, these increases are really just covering their expenses. Um, so being, having to do that, uh, is gonna force landlords to have to consider the worst-case scenario. A lot of times, we take this, that six months, eight months, uh, during a lease period to get to know a tenant, and most of our landlords do not increase the rent to full market. If they were to kick that person out, they could make more money. But because they're, they are a good tenant, um, they will typically not raise it all the way to market rent and try to keep it as reasonable as they can, because most of our owners actually care about people. Um, we care about people, and all of our owners, even now, uh, when a tenant gets behind, even though we're not legally obligated, um, we still offer repayment plans. Uh, it's good for the tenant. They get to stay housed, and it's good for the landlord because evictions are expensive, too. So, um, that's my piece. Thank you all for listening. Have a good evening.
Next, we have Ryan Lewis, Matt Walsh, and then Dennis Flynn.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for letting me speak tonight. Um, I am speaking out against the 180-day ordinance. Uh, this will have the opposite effect for, um, tenants in our area who desperately need affordable housing and places to live. Uh, obviously, housing is a need for everybody. Um, I think my, I'm gonna use my time here tonight to express my concern that, um, council as a whole has not tapped one of the best resources they may have, uh, which is local developers here in town that live locally right here. We would like a better voice, a better opportunity to speak to you and help you solve housing issues together jointly. Everybody tonight, um, and in the past, has talked about, uh, communicating with, uh, everybody, reaching across the aisle. And I'm here to say that, uh, the 180-day notice will not get or keep people in homes. It just won't do it. Um, is what will do it is to work with people that are experts in the industry. Um, I'm privileged to work with and for many of them. Um, that's my, um, that's kind of my, my bid to you all, and I, I hope you take me up on that. Um, I'm happy to share my contact info, and I know many people that I work with and for are, um, happy to speak as well. So, thank you. A lot of my colleagues and people that, um, agree with me have explained everything very eloquently, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Matt Walsh and then Dennis Flynn. Welcome, Matt.
Welcome. Here, thank you. Council President Wilkerson and, uh, members of the council, thank you for having us all here. Um, I am also here to speak out against the, uh, proposed ordinance for the, uh, the, uh, notification increase of, of rents. And, uh, the issue here that we have is there's extra regulation added here, and we're trying to bring more and more people and businesses to Spokane because it really is a great city. In order to do that, people look and they do their research, and in seeing that there's more regulations added, they go elsewhere because they see less red tape. So, that being said, with, you know, increasing the, the notice period to 180 days, there are landlords who will see that and just like to go elsewhere. You know, I mean, cost of housing has gone up everywhere. Mom-and-pop landlords will choose to sell homes that they've had and rented out for years, get a pretty penny for them, and then that depletes our rental market for single-family homes. Um, so we really need to look at what the unintended consequences are because we know that you guys have the best in, of intentions with the idea of increasing this notification period, but the unintended consequences could highly, highly outweigh the benefits. Thank you.
Hi, Council. Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Uh, I also am against this. You want housing, you want it to be affordable, but you wanna impose more costs and restrictions on the landlord. And you all, I, I think Spokane's full of very bright people, and they wouldn't put people here that weren't bright. So, I mean, just think about what increasing costs on the production of a product or service does to the cost of that product or servit, service. You're, you're opposing your own aims here. And don't, I mean, it's like, what's next in the brilliance? Rent controls? I mean, if you wanna see a drop in the housing market, do that. Um, it's ridiculous to have one period for 3% or less and another period for 3%. Either just set it at 120 days and be done with it. Honestly, it should be no more than 20, 60 days. But, you know, just talking about the fairness issue that comes up. You know, if you think about somebody going out and buying a $300,000 house right now to, to use it as rental, and they get a $240,000 mortgage at today's rates, they're paying 1,500 a month in mortgage, 300 in property taxes, and 150 in insurance. That's 1950 before you do any ongoing maintenance, like a 30-year roof, $30,000, $1,000 a year, $90 a month. 10-year carpet, $6,000, $600 a year, $50 a month. 10 years on painting and staining, $1,000 if you do it by yourself, $10 a month. You have to consider these things when you're in that position, right? You have to build up a base for which to pay those things when they happen because we're like everybody else. We can't pay it out of our pocket. Um, so that comes out to 2,100, and that's before any repairs. Stove, water heater, sprinkler system, HVAC, windows. You have to have a little bit of a cushion beyond just the stuff that you know that you have to do for when the unexpected comes up. So fair, I guess fair is in the wallet of the beholder. So, um, when you do raise property taxes by $30 to $50 a month, who do you think ultimately pays for it? It's the renter. Um, so conversely, on the timelines, if I lower rent by 0 to 3% or less than 3% lower, should we force the renter to give me a 120-day notice? If I lower it by 3% or more, should the renter have to give me 180 days' notice? The root problem here is the artificially constricted supply due, in my opinion, to the Growth Management Act. So let's fight the root problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last, um, speaker is Dream.
Good evening once again, City Council. I'm here to speak on the first reading of the ordinance, uh, that everyone else seems to be, uh, the rental increase notification. I am strongly in favor of this policy, um, as we have heard. Um, we have heard from a lot of landlords tonight about the ways that this policy and other regulations will force them to hurt renters, and their hands are tied. And their hands are tied because the market as a whole and the larger corporations that, that are, you know, imposing harsher and higher fees on tenants are still part of the market, and they are all collectively part of the people who own property. So as, when we need, we need this, but this is a small piece of the pie because we exist in a housing crisis, and the housing crisis is due to a lot of the ways that we, um, are, have approached housing in the first place. We need to be looking at right-of-first refusal laws. We need to be looking at community land trusts. How can we, um, pay for this housing and, and build equity in housing in, in terms, in collectively, rather than put that burden all onto individual landlords? Those individual landlords will buckle under the, this burden, but if people group together into land trusts or group together when a landlord is thinking about selling a property, a right-of-first refusal law will give the tenants the ability to bang together and buy it first. And then the tenants can start to get along together and build equity on that house, and community land trusts do the same thing on a larger scale. And then you don't deal with the issue that, once a landlord wants to get out of the business because they've put their time in, they sell that off to a bigger corporation, which we've heard from landlords are the, are the things that are burdening renters. So yes, we need to pass this because renters need it, and it is the main thing to do. And it's crazy out here. I'm a renter. Um, I've been a renter. Most of the people I know are renters, people my age, like, we're renting. And we need this, but this is a drop in the bucket. And we have heard all this testimony from landlords should be, reinforces that notion because we can't just, you know, cut little, make little, uh, changes around the edges. That's not gonna get at solving this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dream. That brings us to the end of our legislative session. We are now going to open forum. Would council like a break? Are you, like, ready to go into open forum?
Keep going. Take a break.
Well, it is now 7:44. Any other commentary on that? I like to keep forward. If we take a break, we lose another 15 minutes. So we are now going to open forum at this point in time. You now have two minutes to speak on any topic that pertains to city business. We'll start with Terry Hill. Lucas Yanni. And then War Bear.
Terry Hill, longtime Spokane resident. Uh, thank you to the, uh, for council members that represent, uh, Spokane on the STA Board for recently passing no fares on weekends through May and June. Thank you. Uh, conditions apply. I only have two minutes. Consult a board member, um, for details. There was opposition to this, uh, move from, uh, board members from other jurisdictions. Uh, some of them, uh, concerned about the impact on the STA budget. Newsflash, STA slice of the local sales tax is about $10 million a month. That exceeds their monthly expenses and has allowed them, over the years, to amass a budget surplus in the millions of dollars. Two of the members made some kind of bizarre statements during that meeting there from other jurisdictions. One said that, um, uh, free fares actually endanger drivers. I drove for STA for nearly 20 years. I never felt endangered by transporting somebody that couldn't afford the fare. I felt it was my duty to transport, not to judge. Another member stated that buses were simply turning into rolling jails. Interesting. Also at that meeting, the, uh, 2023 year-end, um, performance review had two concerning statistics. 131 preventable accidents in the year 2023, up from 2022 of 112 preventable accidents. Their CEO stated in a previous meeting that 70, 35% of their current staff now has less than five years of driving experience. Considering the union one wages and benefits that STA offers, uh, that reflects a high, uh, level of turnover. Makes me wonder what's in the water over there.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you for your service to Spokane. I am voting.
Lucas?
Council President, uh, Marianne had signed up for first reading but got put on the open forum. So she, she's on the open forum list, but she had intended to speak to first reading.
And after I get through these three, I will call her up.
I think I know, you know what I'm gonna talk about. Look, a ceasefire isn't even halfway sufficient at this point. I think you know this, all right? It really is not much to ask. I know many of you on the council were not familiar with the history of Palestine before last October, but for years, I and many others have studied the atrocities the Palestinians have endured for generations. When I come up here and speak, I make sure that I have done my research, that what I say is factual and historically accurate. When I email you, I cite my sources. Though I am frustrated by your inaction, I do not come up here to mouth off. I am trying to inform you of the reality of what we have been witnessing for decades. Sometimes it is hard to accept the truth, but we must always seek the truth, no matter how uncomfortable it may be. The truth is, this is what colonization looks like. When we recite the land acknowledgement, remember what we are witnessing in Palestine is the same vein as what happened here to our indigenous brothers and sisters and is continuing to happen now. The same systems are responsible. These are not my opinions, but the consensus of scholars and historians the world over. When this council unanimously passed a resolution in support of Israel and made this genocide city business, I knew at least a few of you must have been completely misinformed. This is not a game. This is not something you can just bear witness to and then tune out. This is real. This is visceral. This is one of the most important issues of our lifetimes and sits at the intersection of multiple oppressive systems. This is a stain on our shared humanity, and I am asking you to pass a ceasefire resolution to stand up for what is right. I promise you, you will not regret it. Do not let Palestine become another land acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you. War Bear and then Marianne Bornhoff.
Hello. In honey legend, bossy yapi, oki chisei. My toe, you skin ya, we chin ya, kee low, you skin ya, we chin ya, kee. But put you in my home, you a slop, be a doo ta, do you know a warm, or true that, sweetly warm, or?
I've come to ask City Council, what are they doing to support indigenous people? What are they doing now? And what will they be doing in the future? And how can I get involved as well? How can we create a reciprocal relationship to work together, not only for the betterment of our peoples, but for land back and for decolonization? I'm very, very involved in Chaney, Airway Heights, Spokane, our indigenous collective in this area, they're relatives to me. They're not my specific cultures, but they're relatives, and they're indigenous, which means they're family to me. My love for them is unconditional. So I want to know, how can we, as a collective, come together, put our minds together, and create a better future for our people? Because a land acknowledgement, as a young indigenous man, it just seems as an escape goal. It just seems as something people say to get it out of the way. It doesn't seem sincere, it's usually involved with tokenization, and I know because I've witnessed that, not only on a university level, a higher ed level, but in a community college level as well. And it seems that way here at times, too. I'm not saying you guys have malicious intentions towards indigenous people, but I am saying that we need to create a better relationship between this government, this council, and indigenous people, and I want to get involved and I want to help you guys because I can offer direction and guidance for that. But if we're not able to do that and come together as a collective, then we're just going to be polar opposites to energies in the way we see the world, in the way we see the environment, the way we see the earth, in the way we see power dynamics, in the way we see interpersonal relationships, in the way we see ourselves and our connection to the earth. Or if there is that, or if there's a lacking, it's going to happen. So we need to come together and we need to support each other, and I want to offer my knowledge to help you guys know so you can decolonize yourself and learn what we've been through as a collective so we can make this a better world for our people. Thank you.
Mary Ann? After Mary Ann, we'll have KJ January.
Thank you, President Wilkinson and City Councilman. It's been a long time since I've been up here. I think the last time I was here, we changed the rule to add short term rentals because before it was a two hundred and forty-eight dollar fine, and it was unanimous, and the crowd actually cheered. It was a great experience for us, and I can say it's exactly kind of full circle. Fifty years ago, people would come to Spokane and they didn't have hotel rooms, and they would rent from people in their houses and in their rooms, and it was a sense of community. It was a great experience for the outsiders to get a little bit of a window of Spokane, Washington. And I had moved to Spokane fourth of July nineteen eighty-nine, and it was in my independence moving from Portland, Oregon, you know, moving to the big city from Portland, right out of college, and I decided I'm going to be living here my whole life. You know, a past mayor said it's the city of choice, and I believe that. The thing that surprises me is you guys don't realize is that your architecture here is like no other city. Before I became a Realtor in nineteen ninety-five, I worked in the film, and I still do today, doing locations and productions and seeing all the vast, incredible masterpieces that we have in Spokane. Unfortunately, one of those, they started this weekend, is being torn down by Sacred Heart, Mary's Place, which is, my daughter calls Secret Heart, is going away. And I just implore you to think about the future of Spokane. I like to save Spokane, and I think there's ways that are being very proactive and ways that we can go about doing it thoughtfully. Look at other cities, look at what they do. If a building's over fifty years, or if it's on the historic register, that's an easy answer. But sometimes it's better to think more progressive as far as if you want to tear a building down and put up a parking lot, or put up an apartment building, and I build apartment buildings, but I don't tear houses down to do that. I think it's better that you think very thoughtfully and think about the person who might want to have that house. Instead of tearing it down, let's move it down the street. Moving a house is not that expensive, and actually buying an inexpensive lot in Spokane is still an opportunity that you could do. You could find a house for under a hundred thousand dollars that you can move a house to, put it on a lot, and you are way under that threshold for where our homes are right now.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you very much.
KJ January?
Go ahead, KJ, you're unmuted.
Sorry, I muted myself again.
Go ahead.
All right. Hi, my name is KJ, I'm the Director of Advocacy at Spectrum Center Spokane, and I'm here today to advocate for the ordinance that extends the notice period for rent increases in our city. Currently, under state law, tenants are only given a sixty day notice before their rent is raised. However, this short notice period is simply inadequate and fails to address the needs of our community. When considering the landlord tenant relationship, fairness and mutual benefit should be at the forefront. Tenants deserve the same timeframe as landlords to adjust to impending changes. While twenty dollars may not seem significant annually, it translates to two hundred and forty dollars, a substantial sum for many. For landlords maintaining long-term tenants, it's economically, or having long-term tenants is economically advantageous, as the costs associated with eviction and turnover exceeds the potential gains from increased rent. Extending the notice period for rent increases is truly a Band-Aid measure, but it's a critical step that will provide much needed relief for our clients. At Spectrum Center, our community health workers work to offer rental assistance to those in need. Most clients are rent burden, are rent burden, with more than thirty percent of their income going to rent. With the addition of moving fees, first and last deposits, this creates an unattainable income level expected. Additionally, there is so little housing in the Spokane area that without this extension, there isn't really available units for clients to go. When our CHWs work with landlords, some refuse to take any assistance that we offer, I think in part due to because they're worried about their taxes. Other landlords will charge for each day the rent is late, and one of our CHWs has had at least three clients that were evicted, and the landlords never even responded to their request for rental assistance. If this is actually a business, then landlords must run things like a business, which means they should engage in some communication with community, they should have some business savvy and foresight for shifts that may be coming down the pipeline legislatively and through the housing market.
Thank you, KJ.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. Thank you.
Next, we have Jamie Smith and Patrick Martin.
Hi. My name's Jamie Smith. I live here in Spokane. I've lived across the United States, and then I came back home, and I'm really pleased to be addressing you all here tonight. I, this is my first ever City Council meeting, so I apologize if I make any faux pas, but I was wondering if I can ask a question of you all.
You cannot ask a question, but you can email us with a question.
Okay, then I'm going to do the most obnoxious thing and just make assumptions, but my assumption and the question that I would ask is if my shirt would not fulfill the community guidelines that were set out at the beginning of this meeting when it comes to distractions from City Council meetings and acts of protest and acts of expression. And if my shirt, which says Free Palestine, counts as a distraction and an act of expression that's negating the ability of you all to do your job, then what made it appropriate for Councilmember Bingle, who is not here tonight, to wear a shirt with a I Support Israel logo on it? Because to me, those are very similar things to a sign, except that this is on cloth on my person. And it is absolutely harrowing to be in a place in this country where I have lived across the United States, I have seen racial injustices and inequities, I have heard mothers cry for the safety of their children, and then I came back to Spokane proud and just inspired by the fact that we live in a place that takes care of its citizens and genuinely cares about life and tries to do something about that, only to find that despite twenty-plus years ago, when in this same area, we protested in Coeur d'Alene against neo-Nazis moving in, we're still supporting genocide.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Patrick? Patrick Martin?
Good evening, my name is Patrick Martin, and I've had the great privilege of living my whole life here in Spokane. As Expo seventy-four approaches, I'm coming to remember that before our beautiful park was built, it used to be a place where hobos lived and tent camps existed. Tonight, you've heard a great number of people talking about housing in Spokane, and, but no one's talked about the people who are homeless tonight. I was personally touched by this as I lived eight months at the Union Gospel Mission, where I was able to find counseling and eventually a job. When I grew up, I was told that a third of your income should go towards your housing, and when you're working a minimum wage job and you have rent that costs two thousand dollars, that is not possible in this town. Because of that, I would like to propose that a toll be put back on the Maple Street Bridge, that that money be earmarked to help the homeless find housing, and also a portion of it go towards addiction and helping with mental illness. While Tacoma has six dollar fees on their tolls, I believe seventy-five cents, which is far less than what I paid for parking tonight, would be a considerable amount to bring revenue to the city, because this problem isn't going away, and it hasn't since way back in fifty years ago, when the people in your seat made the mistake of just pushing the people out of the area instead of dealing with the real problems that are causing homelessness. It's my hope that you will consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Eugene Knowles, then Jack Talcott?
Eugene Knowles, been here in Spokane since twenty-ten. Yeah, here we go again with the two minutes, but for a minute, I thought we were going to get the war in the Middle East out of the way, but here's the deal, I was going to bring a couple of points on that, but I spend at least two hours a night going all over the internet, reading stuff on the war. I don't need it here, but if this is your first genocide, if this is your first war, if you weren't there for Vietnam, or the Korean War, or Iraq, you know, this is something you're going to be concerned with, and I understand that. Now, a couple of things I want to get to here is the Central Business District. When I came here in two thousand and ten, I said, wow, what a cute little town, what a nice place. But we all know COVID came and shook everybody's game up. So we're going to have to come out of this, and I'm going to go to the war again, it's not going to be talking about the war, I understand that. I wish we could spend two hours a night talking about the war, but a ceasefire resolution here, this council has absolutely no standing. It would be fun and nice, this council has zero standing. Okay, now, I'm going to finish up, see, I went here, because my thing is homeless, I got, see, the conversation shifts. When we had all this talk about housing, we should have kept going on it. I'm the homeless guy, that's where I work. I spent, I said, I'm not going to finish two minutes, I'll try. Okay, the first week, here we are in April, we needed to be discussing this homelessness thing, let's see, the first week in June, we needed to negotiate some sites, here we are in August, I can't read my own writing.
Well, thank you, Eugene. I'll see you next week.
Next week.
Thank you, thank you, City Council. I'm showing up today not with complaints. First, I'm Jack Talcott. I've been here in Spokane, I think, twenty-seven years, this is my home, and I'm not coming with complaints today, I'm coming with gratitude, gratitude for the community that we've, we share here, and some of the conversations today, uniting our relationships with Mother Earth, uniting our relationships with each other, and then we've had a lot of conversations regarding budgets. And what I'd like to point out, some observations, some hopes and some facts, very briefly. The hope is, I hope to share, I hope to gain some support and attention to these ideas that I'm presenting here today, because there's no separation from our community, from the state, from the nation, from the world. We are all in this together, and the world we were born into, especially here in America, secrets have been legal. Our governments and our corporations pay employees to willingly enable the lies that have been sold to us. We're all participating in the Federal Reserve corruption, and unfortunately, our complacency is allowing it to continue, and the wars and the genocide are a serious matter. I'm standing here myself as a proud member of Veterans for Peace, and I carry that mission with me daily. So I see, I see in the future, we have the opportunity, a greater and a better world is waiting to be created through us all, when we believe. And I believe that Spokane can become a greater leader, a greater example for other communities in our state throughout this nation. Our nation can become a much better example and help end, help lead the world into better and healthier futures. It starts with us. I'm publicly for myself, I'm online and seeking support to try and bring these messages to the federal government, so.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Next, we have Victoria, and then Carl Botner.
Stance actually lowered for me this time. Chag, pesach, sameach. My name is Victoria Tasler, and sundown is the market Passover. Instead of celebrating and holding cedar, I feel compelled to continue to speak out against this council's inability to pass an appropriate ceasefire resolution. The city of Spokane should stop encouraging the aggressive acts that Israel has taken upon the Palestinian people, and the United States government should stop using our tax dollars to fund this genocide. According to Not My Tax Dollars, a project of the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights, the U.S. sends three point eight billion dollars to Israel, which is about a hundred and eighteen million from Washington State. With that money, we could fund fourteen thousand households with public housing, pay one point two thousand elementary school teachers, and provide free and low-cost care to forty-one thousand children. And this is still according to not our tax dollars. Yet instead, we have members of this council consistently whine, there's not enough federal funding to solve our housing crisis and opioid epidemic, while ironically wearing I Stand with Israel shirts. Shame on you for not advocating for your own citizens, and shame on you for weaponizing my Jewishness and using us as political pawns. I am sick and tired of going dictating how Jews should react to this. I'm tired of going not understanding the culture and history of the people they are allegedly trying to defend. When Netanyahu compares Palestine to Amalek, he is explicitly calling for the complete annihilation of men, women, children, infants, crops and cattle. This is not self-defense, this is murder and colonization. You are an extension of the U.S. government, and you are complicit. Bring those tax dollars back home to us and help our problems. You have lied to my mother and father about why they are over fighting the Iraq War, and now you are continuing to lie to U.S. citizens why we're over in Israel.
Thank you. Next, I have Sherri Barnett, and then Tom Lambrou. Yes. Come on down, and then Sherri after he's done, I may have got it mixed up, but go for it.
Carl Bettner, I live in unincorporated Spokane County, just one block outside of city limits. President Wilkinson, members of the council, every time you drive your car, remember this is about oil. Remember also that, I want you to remember a strip of land running from Airway Heights to the Idaho-Washington border, and imagine that it runs along the bank of the Spokane River, and that that's the Mediterranean. The Gaza Strip is between three point seven miles and seven point miles only wide. Gaza Strip is between 3.7 miles and 7-point miles only wide, which means that at any point, I could walk from the Mediterranean to the edge of Gaza Strip in about one and a half to three hours. In the last six months, and Gazans are militarily penned in, over the last six months, Israel has dropped 2,001,000-pound dumb bombs supplied by you and me, equalling three Hiroshimas, killing 34,151 Palestinians, injuring 77,84 Palestinians, obliterating 26 of 36 original hospitals, destroying all universities, destroying 70% of all housing, destroying 70% of all elementary and secondary schools, killing 178 United Nations aid workers, killing seven foreign world central kitchen delivery aid, aid workers, delivering aid to Palestinians. Israel is starving and killing Palestinians by refusing entry to Gaza of hundreds of trucks carrying food and medical supplies, which have run out. So now is your opportunity, for your children and your grandchildren, all those in favor of continuing what I just described, please raise your hand.
Thank you, Carl, your time's up.
All of those in favor of opposing what I just described, please raise your hand.
Carl, your time is up, thank you. Sheri Barnett, and then Tom Lambrou.
Silence, silence is complicity.
Carl, your time is up, thank you.
President Wilkerson and all members of the City Council, Sheri Barnett, City of Spokane, I really didn't want to talk on this, it seems like, but there is truth and there is history. A lot of people are ignoring the fact that it's Israel that has been pursued and has been invaded, and it has never stopped trying to be helping the people of Gaza. The United States has sent money, probably much more, to Iran and some of the people who are invading Israel than they have sent to Israel. But I want you to think about Turkey, all the old cities that are in revelation, all through Africa, throughout even huge parts of Europe, and the entire Middle East and Africa used to have Christian churches and Jewish people, and they have been destroyed. Now I want to get real quick to the one that I was gonna talk about. In fact, a lot of people are using the environment to manipulate us and tell us what we're gonna drink, what we're gonna eat, what we're going to put in our houses, and they're ignoring the fact that our atmosphere is 78.08 nitrogen, almost 21% oxygen, not even quite 1% argon, and a .04 CO2. When the dinosaurs were here, when the earth was very different, we had a lot more carbon dioxide than we have now, and we had lots of water, and we had cool, and it is being manipulated to tie down our resources, and I like wisdom better than smart, and our Constitution, the Judeo-Christian beliefs, and free market better than slavery.
Thank you, Sheri. Tom Lambrou?
Tom, if you're online, can you hit star three?
And after that, we'll have Derek Azara.
There's Tisha Goodman with her hand up.
Derek, you wanna come on down?
You know, we spent the evening talking about all these factors, but how about we throw this in? How about we talk about the homeowners that are paying property taxes? May not realize that if you evaluate your payments every month, you're gonna start discovering that half of what you pay is going to the city for taxes and state. So as that climbs further and further up, not only is the renters at risk, but also the homeowners. So we have a mayor that now decided that she's gonna throw in more taxes, and, you know, I can't help but notice it comes to a lot of these meetings. I never see her here, and I find that, you know, pretty bad. You get elected to come to office, to come to this city, and you make a lot of promises to the people here, and that's how you get elected, then you don't even bother to show up to council meetings, you don't show up to town hall meetings. You come in for a moment, you tell the council how they're gonna, you know, how her and her staff's gonna run things. So there's a division going across the whole city. This is why, you know, I've kind of, picking on, dealing a little bit here, but it's really, all of you need to stop with the five to two, five to two, five to one, and maybe start working even harder than you already are, to focus on some of the issues that the homeowners are going through. So it's not just the landlords and the tenants, but it is a lot on the actual homeowners themselves that are paying all these bills, and you keep asking for more and more money. So if you look at the seniors in the city, you know, they earn fixed income, so that you start adding that up, and after a while, they're gonna be losing their homes. And who's gonna take care of them? So, I mean, it's a pretty big issue to look at the whole thing. Coming down the pike now too, I'm not sure all the exact facts, but it's my understanding that there's a law coming up, that the realtors, when you sell your house, you're gonna pay your realtor you hire, but as now, you pay both. But coming down sooner, you're no longer gonna have to pay the other realtor anymore.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Mirak, I'm not gonna pronounce your last name and butcher that, would you come on down? Thank you. And please share your last name.
Yeah, my name is Mirak Kazanjian. I am here before you, on behalf of our Armenian community in Spokane, as we prepare to commemorate the Armenian genocide on April 24, as we do every year. In 1915, Turkish leaders began a systematic attempt to end the Armenian race. More than 1.5 million Armenians perished, and many more were displaced, including my grandparents who were rescued as infants. Armenians also continue our efforts to raise awareness to present-day genocidal threats against us. I came before the City Council last year to bring awareness to the genocidal threat against Armenians in the region of Artak. Since then, this region has been entirely ethnically cleansed of Armenians. As many as 150,000 Armenians were either killed or displaced. Artak has been continuously inhabited by Armenians for over 2,000 years, and now the destruction of its history and culture begins, which includes schools, churches, homes, monuments, graveyards, and monasteries, including the second-century Saint Dadi monastery and the fourth-century Saint Amaras monastery. This week, four more villages in the Tavus region of Armenia are being evacuated and will fall into the hands of the enemy. My hope is that as Armenians continue to speak up and bring awareness, it will deter further genocidal actions. It was through grassroots efforts, such as city council resolutions and state legislations, that in 2021, after 106 years, the U.S. finally recognized the Armenian genocide of 1915. Hopefully, the modern genocide will gain recognition while there is still a chance to stop it. Our federal tax dollars continue to support the Turkish and Azeri efforts to erase Armenia. Armenians here in Spokane will gather this Wednesday to commemorate the Armenian genocide and raise awareness about our people's fight for survival. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Megra Flatman, then we have Dream, and then we'll have Justin Holler.
Megra, can you hit star three? All right, go ahead, you're unmuted. Go ahead, Megra.
Okay, thank you. Nick Estes of the Red Nation Podcast has discussed an imperial bind, where indigenous tribes' relationship with the federal government is inherently colonial. Just as one example, when Nick Estes was on the Five Four Podcast United States v Sioux Nation, he describes how after the United States government stole tribal land and the Sioux Nation sued, their lawyer, quote, "had to be approved by the Bureau of Indian Affairs", and that lawyer was the former governor of South Dakota, who actually negotiated for the Army Corps of Engineers to build the dams on Sioux land. Yikes. Spokane has similarly forced local indigenous people to operate within colonial systems for potential change, while deliberately excluding them, thus ensuring that change will never happen. Range Media's article last month, "An Empty Seat at the Table for Treds," details how the Washington State mandated seat at the Spokane Regional Health District Board for indigenous representation has been empty for years. This seat has still not been filled, despite there being applicants approved by the Native Project. Quote, "When Range requested all applications to the tribal community's position, no documentation about Dylan Dressler's application was provided, and the request was closed until Range called and inquired specifically about records regarding Dressler, at which point the request was reopened, and Range was sent the additional documents, as well as a few emails regarding the applications." End quote. Just to be clear, this empty state mandated seat at the board is not only being purposefully kept empty, but when local news requested information about applicants for the seat, nothing was returned. If Range had not already independently researched and learned that there were applicants, they would not have known this deliberate obfuscation of facts was a lie. This is outrageous. We need to stop denying representation and mistreating the people whose lands we stole. We have forced a colonial system of oppression on the Native Spokane people, and now we are denying them even a voice within this colonial system. As we just heard earlier tonight, thank you.
Dream? And then Justin Holler, and then Will Huelings.
It's a little hard to know what to even talk about, because there's so many things, but I think I'd just like to talk about the way that all these issues are intertwined. We heard earlier from some folks about how the U.S. federal tax dollars disproportionately go towards war mongering, and how our wars are not fought on the behest of any morals, but solely for the purpose of U.S. imperialism and enriching U.S. corporations here. We've heard from, about rental rights and landlord and tenant owners, and we've also heard about indigeneity, and the indigeneity of the Palestinian people, and the indigenous folks who are here, and if we think about that, the very fact that some people control the land, legally control the land and own the land that we all need to use, and that we all need to live on, and that we all need to be a part of, and that goes back to the underlying idea of the people who founded this country, right? These were people who owned land, and by the very nature of owning land, made money off of it. And then if we understand that, and we understand that the U.S. as a colonial project has never stopped, and if we understand that Israel as a colonial project, if you go back and you look at the founding documentation of Israel, it is explicitly, this is a colonial project. The people who are here are not going to leave unless we use violence against them, and they will fight back, and we're prepared to fight back and eliminate the people from this land. They asked the British government, who was already a colonial power there, who had previously told the people on that land that if they fought with the British in the World War II, that their land would be theirs. We understand that all of these systems are intertwined. The reason the city government is broke is because it spends so much money on roads, which are infrastructure that was put in place through lobbying by car companies and fossil fuel companies, and understand that we spend so much money on a police department that is killing us, and those same police departments are trading tactics with the IDF.
Thank you, Dream. Justin Holler, then Will Huelings.
Hi, my name's Justin Holler, and there are enough people to speak of the other things I didn't really need to. I like to quote Ice-T from a song called "You Played Yourself." Bear with me, I gotta turn up my brightness. Guess who controls your destiny? Fans. But you diss them because you think you're a star. That attitude is rude, you won't get far. 'Cause you turn, 'cause they turn on you quick, you'll drop them like a brick. Unemployment is where you'll sit. No friends, 'cause you diss them too. No money, no crew, you're through. You played yourself. Most of you have no moral compass whatsoever, including the people behind me, who I support the current thing crowd. It's spastic to think that we don't need roads. How'd you get here? I understand why you're not lambasting Lisa Brown for hiring all these new people, when you would have lambasted Nadine for hiring a bunch of new people, when we're $50 million over budget. Why is it you can't stand up to a mayor that's with your agenda versus someone who is against your agenda? Now we have no one to, for checks and balances. And then furthermore, we have Lori Kinnear making decisions on whether or not you deserve a raise? How about having Mike Fagan decide whether or not you need a raise? Who is the only one who decided against the 44% increase that you so richly enjoy now from a part-time job? Mike Fagan and Bob Apple mentioned on a phone call with Kate Burke after she spoke, saying, "This is a part-time job."
Thank you, Justin.
Part-time. You're getting full-time money for part-time work.
Thank you. Will?
Good evening, my name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown. I just want to remind you guys, this happened last Tuesday in the Capitol. The House of Representatives overwhelmingly passed a resolution Tuesday condemning the motto, "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free," as anti-Semitic. So, I haven't heard it today, but I've heard that chant upstairs many times. People have actually, I've heard him mention that up here. So, the House of Representatives, okay, overwhelmingly, 377 to 44, with 43 Democrats and Republicans voting for this. So, all I'm saying is, as a minority, me as a minority, I find it offensive that these people here come up here and chant and say stuff that basically white supremacists would said many years ago. We got some white supremacists now going around putting up stickers, and I seen them stickers. I find them offensive. But I also find this offensive that we got people here in our country that are, that care more for people halfway across the world. I served my country honorably, almost dying several times, and it's sick, I come here every day defending and standing up for my fellow Spokane. I mean, maybe it might be controversial, but I don't like fentanyl, I don't like seeing homeless people. I've been around the world, I've never seen the stuff that I've seen here in America. And these people, all they care about is people from another country. I know it's sad that there's war, but that's the facts of life. If they want to protest it, why don't you go to Washington, D.C., and go protest at Joe Biden, the guy that they don't like? But coming here and wasting our time and listening to this is just so infuriating.
Thank you, Will. That gets us to the conclusion of open forum. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
Then move the second to adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any notes, abstentions? We are adjourned.